Hi, I'm Clint Hames and welcome to another installment of Hames Hot Mic. The show likes to highlight current political events and people in the Fraser Valley, and today's show features one of the busiest and hardest working people I know, councillor Sue Naught from the city of Chilliwack. We'll be back right after this message. Councillor Sue Naught has been serving the Chilliwack community as a councillor on Chilliwack City Council since December 2008. She currently serves as the Executive Director for the Chilliwack Hospice Society and has long served the Chilliwack community as a volunteer. She's a past president of the Rotary Club of Chilliwack Mount Shem and currently a member of the Rotary Club of Chilliwack. She's a director with the SerOptimus International Club of Chilliwack, and she represents her community as a member of the Chilliwack Economic Partners Corporation. She's the chair of the city's Chilliwack Public Art Advisory Committee, sits on the Emergency Executive Committee as an alternate on the Regional District and Regional Hospital Districts Board, the Fraser Valley Regional Library Board, the Heritage Advisory Committee Chair, and on and on it goes, with busy people like Sue, as I often say, the introductions take up so much of the time because these are the busiest people in our community, welcome so much councillor Sue Naught.
Thank you very much Clint, and you know, it makes me exhausted actually to hear you say that because you know, when you're doing it, it doesn't seem that bad.
Well, and I know that you've served on council since 2008, which is 13 or so years, which means that those are the lists of jobs that they put on the resume on the website, but also know there's a ton of other things that a councillor with your length of service gets called upon to do without even thinking about it. And I know that's a fun part of your job. What are some of the things you really enjoy about the job that sort of aren't on that list?
You know what, the thing I think I enjoy the most is the contact with people. You know, being involved with the community and talking to people about how they feel about our beautiful city. And I guess one of the things that's really difficult now is the fact that we have public hearings, but everything's over Zoom. And it's, it's been really, really hard, you know, you, you, I really value the input that the community brings to council meetings and to really understand kind of how they're feeling. You think you know, but you, you know, you don't always know. And so that opportunity for them to come in front of council and present their ideas and, and talk to us about some of the things that we're doing, it's, it's really missing these days. So I'm really looking forward to the day when we can have people back in chambers and have that, you know, interaction between them and all of city council. We really rely on that.
Well, I'm sure there's also, as I recall, there's so many public events that you would go to as a member of council where you'd be interacting with people. And so many, so many times people that you chatted with had good ideas or opinions that they were sharing with you as well. And that was such a great way to interact with the community and get feedback from the community. And they weren't ever shy about feedback on how you were doing, as I recall.
Yeah. Not always positive, but you know, that's good too, because it's, it keeps us honest.
Well, with all of that missing, it's, it's a challenge, I'm sure, to, for the job to feel like it used to. But I know we'll get through this and
We will.
And I'm excited to see where the community's going to go. I want to talk about some of the projects that I know that you're working on, some of the things that, that council is challenged with these days. The first one I'd like to talk about is the portal. I think people will remember that the city was put in a very challenging position a while ago as a very cold winter was coming up and some of the people that were living on the streets in our community really had nowhere to go. And the city came up with the answer, which was the portal, a property that I believe the city already owned. And, and so it caused a bit of consternation in that particular neighborhood. I understand that's changing now that there are options that are being presented. Tell us a little bit about that situation.
Okay, thank you. You know, as far as the portal goes, I was never in favor of putting it in that, in that neighborhood. But I think that we recognized at the time that there was so many souls out there and the winter was coming and they were freezing. And you know, you as a human being hate to see anybody else suffer like that. So we were pretty desperate to find a spot. And it was a place where we could put them very temporarily. And as it turned out, it, it went on for quite a long time. And I, I feel sorry for the neighbors in that area and particularly all the kids and stuff passing by the portal all the time. There's a lot of challenges there whenever you're dealing with the homeless population. You have mental health issues and addiction issues and, and things that you really don't want innocent children to be confronted with every day. So we are, we have temporarily moved them again out of that space. And BC Housing now has purchased property at Rowett and Tredaway. What they want to do is they're actually coming to council on the 15th of June for rezoning. Currently that space, the property that they've purchased is zoned M1, which is industrial use. And they want to have it rezoned to R8, which is supportive housing. And you know, we will be having a public hearing about it and hoping to hear from the neighbors and everyone in the area. There's no guarantee that it's going to go through there. You know, whenever we go into a public hearing, we have to make sure that we do go in with an open mind and talk to people. It's a, it's a very, you know, it's a nice large piece of property that would be a great space for it as far as fitting in there. But it also has to be good for the neighborhood, good for the city, and good for our homeless population as far as being on bus routes and that sort of thing. So that will be coming in front of council on the 15th. And if you look back, you know, even to March of 2020, there was 306 homeless people in Chilliwack. And this problem is not going away sadly. And it's not certainly something that is unique to Chilliwack. I think you're seeing this, you know, all over Canada, but certainly all over British Columbia, where you have a number of homeless people. And whether it be because, you know, the cost of housing has gone crazy or you're dealing with an opioid crisis, or you know, there's a number of different reasons. And I think that Housing First is a really important strategy to try and help people, you know, get their lives together and get the supportive help that they need. Wherever they end up putting this new portal, there will be all the wraparound services there. They're partnering with Fraser Health. I think, I've forgotten the name, Phoenix Society will be the operator of the new portal. And they will provide all the meals and all that sort of thing. And then Fraser Health will be coming in to provide all the wraparound services. So hopefully it will find a home soon and we can get the shovels in the ground and get, get the residents of the portal and the homeless population housed so that they can begin to work towards becoming healthier and happier and.
It seems that Chilliwack has done significant amount in this area. And it's not, I pay attention to most of these issues because it's my community and also have a tremendous interest in this. I mean, city of Chilliwack has, in partnership with BC Housing, seemingly provided a significant number of supportive housing units specifically for people who are homeless or experiencing homelessness in the community, much more so than I've seemed to be seeing in other places. I had occasion to speak with a councillor from the city of Surrey as a part of this program. And they were talking about numbers of homeless people that are not that dissimilar to Chilliwack. So our numbers in this part of the world seem to be out of proportion for the size of our community. And I mean, I'm heartened to know that we're grabbing onto this issue and trying to make something of it. But it must be frustrating to see that these numbers were not having a huge impact on the numbers despite the services that, that we're offering.
Yeah, you know, I think of the investment that we have made as a city in, into housing the homeless and trying to get the situation under control. I mean, you don't want to ever see anybody live like that. And you know, it, it is frustrating particularly because really it's a social issue that's a provincial government responsibility. But as a city council and as a city in general, you can't just turn a blind eye and say that's not our responsibility. It affects everyone's quality of life, not only the homeless population, but everyone living within the city. And you know, there's so many people out there that want to help and are trying to help. And we're all pitching in to try and do the best possible job that we can. And you know, I really dream of a day where homelessness is not an issue. And I don't know whether that day will ever come because it just seems that you throw more and more money at it and, and try your best to try and, and have all the things in place for people to get better, to, you know, get on with their lives and, and live a happy, healthy life. And Housing First is definitely a good strategy.
Well, I think what, what I'm encouraged by is that I think what this has required for some time is leadership and that it doesn't, you know, there are pieces that everybody has to own. The city has to own part of it, the Fraser Health has to own part of it, BC Housing has to own part. You know, you can go sort of around the table, but I think we seem to be moving towards in our community right now, people picking up the pieces that they own and working together. And I think what's changed in my mind over the last number of years is the leadership that's coming from City Hall that's saying, okay, look, this isn't necessarily 100% our issue, but we're willing to be the leaders in this and bring people together. And I think I'm, I'm encouraged by that. And I think people I talked to are, are very encouraged by that.
Yeah, one of the, I think the best things that we did too was to get, get recognized as a city that needed help. You know, at one time we weren't even at one of the, the cities that was at risk. And so when we finally got onto that list to say, listen, we have a, we have a problem in Chilliwack and we need your help as the provincial government, you know, that made a huge difference. We, where we've got BC Housing now looking for projects and ways to house our homeless. And, and that kind of partnership with the provincial government is, is working really well for us. So we've, we've been really lucky and we're very grateful to BC Housing and to the provincial government for recognizing that there is a problem here and working with us.
Let's, let's shift gears now and talk about another project that I've been reading a little bit about and, and have seen some comments about. And that's the fact that finally, City Hall is going to get a much needed expansion and upgrade. Can you tell us what's being planned?
Well, before I give you the great grand figure of how much all of this is going to cost, I'm going to tell you that we had staff at City Hall in broom closets and in every single nook and cranny that we've been able to. I think it became really apparent that there was a huge overcrowding issue when you all of a sudden are dealing with a global pandemic. You know, people are practically sitting on each other and our staff are amazing, you know, never complaining, but so many people were working just, you know, on top of each other. So we have finally come to the conclusion, we didn't want to build a brand new expensive building. We decided to work within the property that we currently own and the building that we currently own and just to add on to it. So at the last council meeting, we approved a budget of $6,589,000 to go into a new wing for City Hall. The parking will be displaced, but it'll be moving to across the street. And it'll be a two level, or sorry, a three floor building that will sort of, it'll be along Young Road. And, and you know, there'll be a lot of services and kiosks and things in the, in the main floor for the community to come in. It's going to be a much better situation than sending them through City Hall and down the stairs and around the corner to try and do any kind of business. So it's going to be very welcoming. We are dealing with Wales and McClellan, which is the, the company that has designed it. It's going to be 20,000 square feet and our staff are so absolutely delighted because working in little tiny cubicles, it's, you know, it's pretty hard to try and get as much work done as they do. And we have a very, very lean staff. We've made sure that we don't, you know, that, that we work smarter. And for many, many years, we've been very careful about hiring staff. So the, this poor lean staff, not only are they asked to do an amazing amount of work, but you know, with all that overcrowding, I'm surprised they haven't gone crazy.
Well, you know, what's, what's, what I don't think a lot of people realize is that that building was the old township hall that was built sometime in the, in the late 1950s. And it all, it housed the township government and it housed the RCMP Township detachment in that one little building, except for the council chambers, which was built in 1991. And the only change, apart from building those council chambers on, the only change to that space was that when the city amalgamated in the 1980s, they kicked the RCMP out, built them a brand new building and then converted, literally converted the jail cells into offices. And so that, and then moved the entire city staff over into there as well. So you know, I, I chuckle when I think about, you know, anybody who might be opposed to this. And I get it, you know, you're spending money on, on yourself as opposed, and you know, there's so many hands out for money. But, but you know, I know that it was, it was crowded in 1991.
Yeah.
And now you're, what are we, 50 years later? And it's still the same place. And I, I, I think a lot of people who've lived here as long as I have and as long as you have will know that this is something that's badly needed. And I, I'm, you know, you're going to get critics, but ask them to come and work in there for a day and, and that'll change their opinion, I think.
Well, I have to say, you know, the, the only thing that we've actually put money towards in my tenure on council is I think, I can't remember what year it was, but we put it in an elevator, which was for accessibility and, you know. And I think that ended up taking up some space and crowding the people even more. So yeah, I, you know, I think the staff deserve it and I think they're going to be a lot more productive. And not that they're not productive now, they do an amazing job. But yeah, it's, it's crazy squashed in there. And so they're all pretty excited about the fact that they, they're going to actually have space to stretch their arms out.
Yeah, it's, it's going to be something, and I know that the plan, and it goes back even to my time there. The plan was to build in the front parking lot and then expand parking out the back. And it sounds like that's what's going to happen. So people will have a place to park and
Well, it's actually going to be across the street because we have purchased a couple of properties across the street. So they'll be building a new parking lot there. And then there'll be a walk across and they'll be able to walk straight in the front door.
So we're going to come back with more questions for councillor Sue Naught as we talk about things that are happening in our great city of Chilliwack. We'll be back right after these messages. Welcome back everyone. My guest is city of Chilliwack councillor Sue Naught. We've talked a little bit about issues related to a facility called the portal and homelessness. We've talked about the city's plans for new city hall or expanded city hall. And we've also talked about the challenges related to being councillor in this time of COVID. The real reason I wanted to talk with councillor Naught today is an issue that's near and dear to my heart, and that's public art. Now, I want to start by saying congratulations. Having public art in our community is something that I think enhances all of us. And maybe there are lots of people who would debate that, but I think it's a darn good thing. And I think most people are supportive. But the job of chairing a committee that decides what art goes where must seem at times like a bit of a fool's game because you're being asked to, to put a value on something as so, so broad as public art. Does it feel like that to you at times?
It does, you know, and the funny thing is that a lot of my fellow councillors, I think they thought that, you know, the public art portfolio, which I've had for many years now, was kind of a cushy job. But as it turns out, it's probably the, one of the most controversial committees to be on. You know, people either love it or they hate it. You know, I remember when we put in the, the big flowers and the Evans Roundabout. Well, the hate mail that I received for that and what a ridiculous waste of money. And the reality is that art is very subjective and it did make people stand up and take note. And, and there was lots of conversation about it. And that's one of the things that art is meant to do. It's meant to create conversation and it certainly did that. You know, when I was growing up, art was my thing. I always loved art. I was not a great student and you know, I look at our city and we have great sports fields and baseball fields. We've got a curling rink. We've got, you know, tons of stuff for people that are athletic or involved in team sports. And I wanted to make sure that there was something for those kids out there that explore and, and are fascinated by the arts. And so we have a cultural center now that does just amazing work. And for kids who are growing up and want to be artists, they can see that what they love is also valued.
And I think you're exactly right when you say art is so subjective. And once you start studying art as something that you study, you realize the purpose of art is not to represent reality, but the purpose of art is to make you think and make our community have conversations about what's important and what it makes them think. And I, I chuckle when I see the comments about the flowers as an example. I looked at them and I thought, oh, those are pretty, you know. And, and the next thought in my head was, oh, there's going to be some people hate them.
Yeah.
And, and I just love the fact that we're engaged in putting art in the community. And what it is, I don't care after that. I think having art that makes you think, makes you talk is the important thing. Now, you've got a project, I think, at Five Corners that you've, there's, there's a piece that's proposed for there. I'm not sure where, what the status of that is yet. Can you talk a little bit about the Five Corners project for
Absolutely. So we sent out an RFP, which is Request for Proposal, to the art community. And you know, just for those people who aren't really aware of how the process goes, it is sent far and wide. We make sure that it goes to our indigenous community. It goes to all the art organizations. It also goes far afield. It goes outside of Chilliwack and to all the different art organizations and, and groups so that we can get the best possible result. And there is certain things that they have to do. They have to meet our specifications. So we say that it can be this wide by this tall and it has to fit into the particular spots. So at Five Corners, we asked for a piece that would reflect the history of Chilliwack and also the revitalization of that area and being Five Corners. And it did go out. We received a number, I think we received 10 proposals, but you know, six of them didn't meet the specifications as far as engineering and you know, all the rest of them. So we had four that were contenders that were really great. And it was very difficult. And it came, came in front of the Public Art Advisory Committee and they overwhelmingly chose Meet You at the Five, which is a five on a base. It has a beautiful base on it that has a lot of historical information and, and this big five. And there was some controversy around it. Some of the members of council, when it went forward to council, it went forward as the, the choice of the committee. Normally we would give them three, but because it was so overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly chosen by the Public Art Committee, we just gave them that one choice. And they wanted to see what else we had received. They also, you know, some had a reaction to it, that they weren't like really crazy about the idea and they didn't think that it was representative. So we went back. We had a number of presentations that went to the Public Art Committee from all four proponents. And you know, what the history was, what their history in the area was, what, what the things within their art piece was representative or what was, what it was representing for Five Corners and the history of Chilliwack. And, and once again, when the vote came in, the Public Art Advisory Committee picked the Meet You at the Five again. So then it went back to council and it was a little bit of a arm wrestle with some members of council, but at the end of the day, it went through and it has now been selected. So the artists, I've forgotten what their names are and I should have that written down here. But anyways, they are local people. They used to have a studio right above Five Corners, looking down on Five Corners. There's a ton of history involved in it. It can be lit up for purple light nights or it can be lit up for the 215 children that were recently found in the Kamloops Residential School. So it could be lit up orange. It can be, the colors can be changed. There's all sorts of really cool things about it. And it will now go forward, which I'm very excited about because I really love the piece. And I think it does represent Five Corners. And, and when you do see it, when people go to see it, they should read the base of it and read all the historical information that's on there. And just remember that they may not love it, but it is, it is a topic of conversation. And you know, it's a pretty nice way to meet people in the downtown core to say, I'll meet you at the Five. And then they can go from there. So we're pretty excited about it.
Well, I applaud, as I say, the notion that we should make public art a priority in our community. And I think it's great that you're doing that. What you and the committee, who I assume are all people who love Chilliwack as much as you do, what you guys decide is fine with me. I'll never criticize public art because I don't think that's our job. I think our job is to just figure out what about that piece of public art we like or don't like and why it makes us talk and why it makes us engaged in art in the community. So kudos to you for taking that on. It's not an easy job and I'm sure it can be frustrating at times. But it's, it's certainly something we need and I'm glad you're doing that. I just think that the public art, and I think we can call it public art, at the roundabout at the Vetter Bridge is one of the most stunning pieces of art I've ever seen. And that's anywhere. The thought that's gone into that, the, the sense of place that it gives that particular roundabout. And you know, you know, you're going into a part of our community when you're going through that roundabout that has such cultural significance
It does, yeah.
to indigenous people in this area and all that. I just think that that's wonderful. And if we get, we get more of that, then as a community, we grow. Sue, what's next for you? Because you know, I'm looking at a seasoned political veteran in our community, somebody that's done it all, taken on most of the difficult jobs and portfolios in the community. Are we looking at council as being the, okay, I'm going to get through this and then I'm going to put my feet up and travel the world with my hubby and do those things? Or are we looking at Sue, who's looking at bigger and better things?
Well, I've pretty much decided at this point that this will be my last term on council. I have absolutely loved the experience of being on council. But you know, I was recently married and my husband and I would like to do some traveling for sure. I have worked two jobs my entire life and I think it's time. I have my own art projects, you know, I, I'm a painter. I refinish, refinish furniture. I do all sorts of things like that. I also just became a grandma. So you know, I have this beautiful new grandchild. And I think it's time for me to maybe devote a little bit more time to my family and let somebody else get the opportunity because I can tell you that it is an amazing opportunity. It's so fulfilling to be that involved in your community. And I know probably the first year that I'm not a city councillor anymore, it will drive me crazy not knowing what's going on every minute and having a say in things. But you know, it's time. So I look forward to that and, and I don't.
Well, I, strangely, I can relate to everything you've just said because it, there is an adjustment period. There's no question. But what advice, because I think your head's got to be full of good advice.
Right.
What advice would you give to people who are thinking as they hear you say that, ooh, maybe that's something I ought to try? What, what advice would you give?
The best advice I would give you is do it for the right reason. Don't do it because you have a beef about a particular issue in the city or you're going to change this or whatever. I think that we have had a long line of really great councils who have done some amazing work in this city. And if you want to be on council and be part of a really great team, it's a team effort. You only have one vote. Don't go in there to try and solve a particular beef you're having or to change the world. It, it doesn't happen overnight. You have to be in it for the long haul. You have to be a patient, but persistent person in order to get things done and to, to make really great changes in your community. But you will always be one voice in a team of seven people who are, bring to the table some amazing experience and, and you know, check your ego at the door.
I think that's probably really sound advice. I know even at this late date, I I know even at this late date, I have folks who come to me and say, yeah, I'm thinking of running for council. What's the, what advice would you give me? And I think that's exactly the advice I give most folks is to say, you know, you're only one of seven people. I know you have a lot of great ideas and you think you might get elected and then implement those ideas, but you need to be elected and then convince six other people that those are good ideas.
Yeah.
And, and you do that by building trust and building a relationship with those folks.
Yeah.
So I think you've done an exceptional job of doing that over 13 years and, and a little bit more to go. And I want to...
Oh yeah, I'm all in for the next year, I'll tell you. And I have to say one thing, that I've hit a lot of landmines over the years. So if you are thinking about running for council, please give me a call. I'd be happy to admit all the stupid things that I have done and the things that I have learned. You know, it's just like being a parent. It doesn't come with a, a book of instructions on how to be really great at it.
Well, I would disagree. I can't think of anything at the moment, maybe if I did start art. I can't think of anything at the moment that I would describe as a landmine that would be associated with Sue Knott and the work that she's done for this community. So having said that, it's time for us to wrap up. It's been great having you as a guest, Sue, and I'll make sure I do it again. Before you give up this marvelous career of yours, thank you for the information you've provided. I think there's been a ton of interesting stuff presented today. And I'd like to thank the folks who are watching and encourage you to keep watching this little adventure we call Hames Hot Mic. Thank you.
Thank you, Clint.